For the. That's an air quote.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we give you praise tonight and we thank you for the day that you've given us. And Lord, we want to thank you for such beautiful weather that's been we've had this fall. We pray for this community, Lord. We pray for this school corporation. Would we ask that you you guide the students and their judgment and what they are doing in their lives? Lord, we we pray, Lord, as a world that we can see how great you are. For your son came and he he sacrificed his life on the cross. And we know that because of this and the resurrection that one day, Lord, we could spend eternity with you. We praise you today, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
All right, we'll jump into the minutes, and I would entertain the motion to approve the minutes for the September eighth, twenty twenty five school board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Any discussion or questions? Thank you, Melissa. All those in favor? Thank you. And I don't think we have any special presentations or recognitions this evening.
We do not.
Okay, so I can jump.
Just gonna discuss the highlights of the tentative agreement that we have with the WBTA in regards to the collective bargaining agreement. So just some of the highlights, I know it's been posted for a few days on our website as required by law. Some of the highlights, three percent increase to the salary schedule and the ECA schedule. Addition of the state mandated academic need factors using the required literacy endorsement. So we'll add a add a row and column for that. Increase in corporation contribution to dental insurance from two hundred to two fifty. Increase the accumulated sick day amount to a hundred and five dollars per day. Addition of the following ECA positions. Additional wrestling position to help cover with girls wrestling, which was started last year. Addition to the junior high girl soccer assistant position. And then maker space management positions at the elementary level. In regards to ECA positions, the removal, the dyslexia specialist at the elementary level, and then any of the fifth grade coaching positions that we previously had there. So that are those are the highlights. And like I said, this is the public meeting to share this information. Next board meeting is technically a hearing to anybody who would have any concerns or issues with it. And then you all will vote on it. So any questions for me about this?
Rob, I think you said girls, but I it is boys and girls.
Wrestling, yeah.
I mean, junior high soccer assistant, did you?
Oh, I did just say girls. But it is boys and girls. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And that was to standardize some of the language correctly on the assistant, the junior high assistant soccer.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you. We'll move then next into the action items. And the first of the action items is with personnel.
Yeah, I would recommend lengthy lengthy list. I would recommend that you approve the personnel as presented.
Scroll, scroll. All right. So we've we've got that list, and is there, we have a recommendation? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Adam. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. And any questions? If not, all those in favor? Thank you. And next in the is the business section, and we've got the revised school calendar.
Yeah, I would like to recommend that you approve a change for the twenty six twenty six calendar for the parent teacher conferences at the elementary to move from the Thursday to Tuesday, October sixth and thirteenth versus the eighth and fifteenth. So that's just after we've had some discussions with Tricia and Abby. We feel like that's best for a number of reasons.
Thank you for your input on that. So we have a recommendation to modify the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school calendar. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you, Melissa. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions? If there are, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. And we've got the school improvement plan for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six next.
Yes, there've been a little change at the state as far as requirements for school improvement plans, but we still, each of our buildings still developed them. There's a new format that they had the option of utilizing two out of three did. And these plans still drive what takes place on a day to day basis with the goals. Especially when you start looking at the data and kind of where we where we want to be with the standardized testing. And so each of the buildings has put significant amount of time. And even though the state's not requesting or requiring each one of our schools do it, I still felt like it was important to share with you all and then have you all approve them.
Helps keep everybody on the same page with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a recommendation that the board approve each building school improvement plan for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Phil.
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you for your work with that as well. And next is the teacher evaluation, board policy thirty one thirty.
Yeah, or some change in language at state level that does not require that we categorize the teachers in four different categories. It was highly effective, effective, needs improvement, and what's the line? Ineffective. And so we we wanted to revisit the teacher evaluation policy. And with the input from a committee of teachers and administrators, we're moving the from four categories to two effective and improvement necessary. And with that, our frame that improvement necessary would move to would be from zero to two point seven four. And then two point seven five or higher would be effective. So I would recommend that you all approve that based on the effort with the teachers and and putting that together.
Thank you. So we've got a recommendation for the update to board policy thirty one thirty regarding the modified rise evaluation plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Only thing I'll say on it is things never stay the same. Everything just
Yeah.
gets adjusted and.
And what we found with the four categories, the highly effective and effective feelings got hurt. And there were there were probably some that had a little bit of unrealistic expectations. I'm not saying that in a negative way. It's just the truth. And, you know, we tried to drive home the fact that what we we love the desire to be at that level and everybody be highly effective, that's not a reasonable achievement when you really look at it. And honestly, if you're effective, that means you're doing your job and you're doing it well. And so hopefully this will kind of take that kind of tension between teachers and remove that 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 has existed for it's been twelve or fourteen years that this has been in existence. So.
And I guess my only question on it then is, isn't there a piece later on in the year where there's some stipend and money that's been tied that gets taken out to highly effective, effectives?
It used to be tied to that.
Okay.
So now that's that's a whole other thing. Tag, the tag grants changed. Now the states tell us we can only give it to twenty percent. They're gonna be, they're gonna give us the amount that we have and only twenty percent. So only twenty percent of our teachers are seventeen teachers. So you, we went from every teacher that was evaluated as effective or highly effective got a
A portion of it, yes. It was percentage divided up to those that group.
And now we're going to only seventeen, and it's a three thousand five hundred, five thousand and seventy five hundred, is that right? Yeah, it's close to those ranges. And so now we have to, as administrators, and then we'll involve the teachers to have some input as well, come up with how we're gonna distribute the tag grant. So, and it was one of those that we as administration decided we did not, we had an option of not taking it. But number one, I don't think that sends a message to state that's what they want to hear. So you, we're trying to do this and you're not willing to take it. And so, you know, that's, it's a good point you bring up. And yeah, that's kind of, that's gone to the wayside now, too.
And just to be clear, that was not Western Boone making a decision that we wanted to change the process. That was a state, a state level.
Our state lawmakers making.
Sent to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we've got a recommendation with a motion and a second for the board policy revision thirty one thirty. I guess all those in favor? Thank you. And now next is the appeal of teacher evaluations, board policy thirty one thirty five.
Yeah, board policy thirty one thirty five with the changes in the law. We're no longer required by law to put them in four categories. And we've gone now from four to two, so we removed that, I think it was maybe two sentences. And so basically, that's now says that they cannot appeal a evaluation to the board. And so that that's the changes. We removed the, what was said along the lines of is required by law and then four categories. So those are removed. I think it's one sentence now. So I recommend that you approve that.
So we have a recommendation for that revision of board policy thirty one thirty five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions or discussion with that? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. And next item is the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty six corporate budget for the rainy day debt service, education, and operation funds.
Yeah, so you have in front of you an ordinance, a resolution for appropriations and tax rates for twenty twenty six. We had our public hearing last month with the notice the taxpayers published. And so this is the meeting where we adopted the budget for twenty twenty six. The rainy day fund, the education fund, and the operation funds as listed on the resolution match exactly how they were advertised last month. So I'm not gonna talk about those any. They're they're the exact same what we saw last month. But last month, debt service, I, we, I listed an estimate of six million two hundred thousand and a levy of the same six million two hundred thousand. Since the last meeting, we did get our certified net assessed value and which then helped me to dial in what we needed for our for our debt service budget and levy. And so I wanted to show you, Tricia, could you dim the lights for me a little bit? A little bit about the tax rate and how that's gonna shake out. So the twenty twenty six certified net assessed value is right there at the top, and it went up just a little bit under four million dollars. And so for a billion dollar assessed value, that's staying flat. I mean, so our assessed value for the first time in several years stayed very, very flat. It was one billion sixty five million last year, and now it's sixty eight eight. So that's a very, very flat A V. Is that good or bad? I I don't think it's either. I think it's about what we expected. We know farm ground went down in assessed value, and so we saw some growth in other areas. So anyway, it's a very flat A V. Again, what I advertised, you'll see right below there. And based on that now certified net assessed value, those advertised rates would have would have provided us, you know, a fifty eight cent debt tax rate and a forty forty eight cent operations tax rate, which would have been ninety eight cents. I knew we advertised really high with that debt service rate, but we can always drop it down, which is what you'll see in the adopted, what I'm proposing that you adopt tonight is the debt service levy of the five point four million. And the operations levy is that four point three million, which was advertised. What that does is that keeps our debt tax rate neutral from what it's been the last two years. So that point five zero eight two is the exact same debt rate we've had the last two years. And then the operations tax rate did go up just a little bit because we're taking that four percent increase in the maximum levy. So then the total rate, and this is all still just an estimate, but would be point nine one three zero dollars or ninety one point three cents of every hundred dollars assessed value. So that's a change of one point four two cents, an increase of one point four two cents over last year, and a drop of nine and a half cents since twenty twenty two. Okay? That's based on this certified net assessed value. My DLGF rep told me last week that 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 number could actually change again before the end of the year, which I didn't think was possible. But she said for Boone County, it's it's probably gonna change.
Based on what?
I don't know. And she didn't know.
Appeals?
So I, my guess is.
Feel like there is a mistake, Kyle?
Well, she didn't say that, and I, that's why I don't want to allude to that. But maybe there was a mistake made or
Appeals?
An appeal or, you know, I'm thinking it has to do with these, you know, there's a lot of TIF districts being established and something to do with the TIF district ballot. She didn't know, and and so therefore, I don't know. She just said she was pretty sure the county's overall A V was gonna change. And because I said, we didn't get ours till the end of September, and she goes, well, I hate to tell you, but it might change again. Okay, so.
I mean, did someone tell her? I mean, this is weird.
I don't know.
It could change. I don't know.
Well, she was, she was fairly certain that it was gonna change for Boone County as a whole. Whether Western Boone District was in that change or not, I don't think she knew that. I don't think she knew it to that detail. But so, but she has all of Boone County. So she has Lebanon schools, Isles schools, and so.
She didn't feel like it, which way she.
She didn't know, and she didn't, if she knew, she didn't let on.
Yeah.
I asked, but.
Poker face.
So, you know, it it will be what it'll be, but but I felt comfortable with, you know, adopting these two levies with where we're at today and that rate. We still have the option of dropping those levies down, even after you adopt it, we can't ever increase it. So even after we get our notice in December or maybe January, our seventeen eighty two notice, we can drop those levies down if for some reason we're not happy with with the way they come back. But we can't, we can't ever go higher than what was adopted. So what you will see on the resolution is different than what I'm showing you here because I'm showing you what I believe to be true. But on the resolution, I've used a certified assessed value of only nine hundred million, and that gives us some tax rate to protect us in case, in case some reason the county comes back and lowers our A V by a hundred. So that protects our rate. So we're adopting higher rates than what they will actually be, and that's standard every year. But the levies are gonna be what they are unless unless we decide to drop them after the fact, which I don't, I don't foresee that. The other thing I did want to know, and it's kind, it's at the bottom here. We are gonna lose about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of this levy, and it will be taken from both debt and operations fund, which is crazy that they're gonna take money out of our debt fund. But we're gonna lose that due to this new homestead credit that is new for this year. So, and you can think of it about half and half because our debt and our operations rates are pretty close, fifty cents, forty cents. But they're gonna take two hundred and twenty five thousand out of operations and two hundred, I don't know, out of debt. That the money that we levy. So we won't, we won't actually raise as much as we're adopting either. So that's just a, that's a new wrinkle this year. The good news is, is we we needed to spend out some of our cash in our debt, in our debt service fund anyway. So we're gonna use that to make up the difference.
And that's not a surprise on that four hundred and thirty thousand. So when we had the finance people come and talk to us, they started talking about the shift.
Yes.
With that homestead credit over the next couple of years where it's eventually gonna go to like almost be non existent because they're gonna.
Yeah, and he said, I think he said three between three hundred and nine hundred thousand were there, was their estimate. They hit it. I mean, that's almost right in the middle, that four hundred and thirty.
Right. So I think
Yeah.
for the folks in the school district, what they want to know is that's not a surprise.
It is not.
Because we tried to meet and get those financial things ahead of time. It gave us time to plan for that and to know it was coming.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, knowing kind of the, seeing the actual number, DLGF provided us that four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's it's an estimate, so it could be a little more, it could be a little less. But yeah, it was, it was not a shock. It's disappointing, of course, but it's, it was not a surprise.
And to think that there, we're fortunate, it was only two hundred thousand Yeah. debt service, to think there are corporations out there that are gonna struggle to make payment using debt service on debt they incurred based on the proper process when they incurred it. It makes no sense, and I don't, I don't care what lawmakers try to convince me otherwise. Something's gonna have to change because you cannot keep doing that over the next two years. I mean, schools aren't gonna be able to make payment, some schools, if if something doesn't change. We, like Kyle said, we had the cash balance. We're very fortunate to pay it with that.
I was told that there are school corporations that are gonna have to make debt payments out of their operations and education funds because their their debt levy would not cover the payments because of these.
Explain that to me when you can, when there are certain requirements to get debt anyway, right? You all know what kind of guidelines exist, so I'll get off my soapbox, but it's frustrating.
So that's really the big, the big thing I wanted to hit on because that's been the, that's been the big X factor, I guess, in this whole process is not knowing our assessed value. And I guess we still don't know for a hundred percent sure what it is, but at least I think it's close to what it all ended up as. And so I wanted to make sure and point that out. So with with your approval tonight, I'll submit this to the DLGF tomorrow. And then the next step is to wait for them to provide us our our seventeen eighty two notice, which is, which is the budget approval process, and that usually happens in December. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's all, that's all I was gonna mention about that tonight.
All right, so we've got a recommendation that the board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty six corporate budget for the rainy day debt services, education, and operations fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Adam. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions or discussion?
And Shane, could I have you go on this one, too?
Yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Kyle, I'm glad you know all this stuff. I mean, this is, got it. And Phil, you bring up.
It's total government. It's ridiculous.
And I'm glad you bring that up. I mean, here, he's dealing with, he has a week before you guys approve this or vote on it tonight of actually having our A V. And to expect school corporations to do what we do with so little information and not having the required documents that by law should have been given to us. What, August first, Kyle?
Yeah.
August first. I wanted to make sure I was correct on that. It's, it's, it's just so frustrating, and I appreciate the Kyle's efforts and and having a good handle on it. We're very fortunate with him at the helm of doing that.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
And just to kind of move, just to move right along, we have a few more resolutions that deal with the budget process. The the next one is the resolution to adopt the capital projects plan, the twenty six twenty eight capital projects plan. That is the same plan that we had the public hearing over last month. And so my recommendation is that the board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty eight capital projects plan. So if it's okay, can I ask for a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you just ask?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Thanks, Dennis. All those in favor? And in the same way, the the school bus replacement plan, twenty twenty six to twenty thirty, we had a public hearing September the eighth. Nothing has changed in that plan from the hearing. So I am recommending that the board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty school bus replacement plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Melissa.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. All those in favor? All right, one more budget resolution. This is the resolution to grant the authority to Mr. Ramey to lower the appropriations for the estimated twenty twenty six fund expenditures. And that would be if for some reason, when we get our seventeen eighty two notice, we want to make an adjustment to those appropriations. That gives Rob the authority to do that without having another board meeting. So I recommend that you approve that resolution, granting him the authority if we suggest to do so. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Greg. Second?
Second.
Yes. All those in favor? And since I have the football, I will carry it on one more, which is not budget related, but our five year copier lease is coming due. And so I am recommending that the board approve a five year copier lease with Toshiba. The lease payment is one thousand one hundred and forty five dollars and fifty three cents per month for a sixty month lease beginning October twenty twenty five.
That's fixed throughout.
The lease payment is fixed. What will not be fixed will be the the click rates and, you know, what what we pay per click for, you know, for each copy and so on. But yes, that's for the equipment itself.
That's for nine?
Yes. And that's the same, I mean, we have Rico copiers now, Toshiba now has the state contract, and their pricing would is far and away better than than what we got anywhere else. Our current, our current lease payments are about fifteen, fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars a month. So we're actually dropping our our lease cost with this new, with this new lease, which is a good thing.
Will I make a motion that we approve that five year copier lease with Toshiba then?
Thank you, Shane. Is there a second? Thank you, Greg. Any other questions about that? All those in favor? Thank you all very much. I'll turn it back over.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is the mock trial club.
All right, Mr. Miller has sent a recommendation for you to approve the mock trial club. Mr. Byers and Miss Gibby volunteered to sponsor the club, and I know he gave you some information in regards to his recommendation. So I would recommend that you approve the mock trial club.
Thank you for that recommendation. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And do we have a second? Any questions or discussion? I noticed this comes on the heels of the To Kill a Mockingbird cities that were built over in the in the community room recently that were well done. But they're fired up for it. They're excited? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. And then also, next item is a DECA chapter.
Yeah, along those lines, Mr. Miller's recommended that you approve the DECA chapter. The goal is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And so Mr. Crouch has kind of got a game plan that we share with you all on how to get this up and running and be able to compete against some other schools here still this school year. So anything else you want to add, Mr. Miller?
No, it's a it's kind of a national organization. And there's a lot to it. So there's a lot of work to do. We really get them well.
It's been around a long time, too.
Yeah. So they do good things.
Excellent. We have a recommendation for that DECA chapter. Is there a motion? Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Phil. Any questions or other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Next are the salvage items.
Yep. Mr. Dexter's recommending that you approve the old J V softball die or scoreboard for a salvage. That was replaced sometime late spring, wasn't it? Early summer. So. Yep. So again.
Going to somebody's pole yard?
Well, I'm sure that they can come take it. It's theirs, right? Because once it's declared salvage and. Yeah. I think Dexter has a special someone that he thinks it'd be great at their home. All right. Just in good humor.
So we've got a recommendation for that that salvage. Is there a motion? Thank you, Greg. Is there a second? Thank you, Adam. Any questions or further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Thank you. Next are donations.
Yeah, we have three donations I recommend you approve. Thornton Elementary received two hundred dollars from STEM. Western Boone E C or F C A received an anonymous donation of a thousand dollars. And Western Boone Radio TV received an anonymous donation of a thousand dollars. It's awesome to see the support for our kids and recommend you approve.
Yeah, that's great. We have a recommendation. Is there a motion? Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Dennis. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Next are the out-of-state overnight field trips.
Yeah, we have a few here. Always good to see. Michaela Smith and Tony Carroll with the Ag Department, Indiana F F A Leadership in Trafalgar, October tenth, October twelfth. At Terra Query Student Leadership Conference Dayton, Ohio, October thirtieth. Varsity Wrestling, the Spartan Classic in Connersville on December thirtieth. And then Leslie Baker, leading the band and choir with Sammy Gillahan to Chicago, the Great Wolf Lodge in C I B C Theater, March twenty-second to March twenty-third, twenty twenty-six. So I recommend you approve those. Those have all been vetted by Mr. Miller.
Excellent. We have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Adam. Any questions, comments regarding the overnight field trips? Here are none. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And next are claims.
Few claims to mention tonight of note. The first is check number nine five nine five seven to Midwest Transit. This was for a new seventy-eight passenger twenty twenty-six school bus. That amount was one hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Is that right? Another one was check number nine five nine nine zero, nine five nine nine zero to Simtech Golf LLC. This was the second and final payment on the golf simulators paid with the money. That was nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. So that was the second half of that. Check number nine five nine nine one to Superior Ground Cover in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. It's kind of, I think this is funny. The description is engineered wood fiber at Thornton Elementary, which is also known as mulch. And so, yep, those were the three claims I was gonna mention tonight that were a little bit out of the ordinary.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a recommendation to approve those claims from September eighth through October thirteenth as submitted. Is there a motion? Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions or further discussion? If there are, I would ask all those in favor. Okay, thank you. And next are the monthly financial reports.
Yes. As of September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, the education fund cash balance was five million five hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. Education fund expenditures for September were nine hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. As of the end of September, a total of sixty-six percent of the twenty twenty-five appropriation was expended. The operations fund cash balance at the end of September was three million two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. And expenditures for the month were six hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That's higher than normal again for the due to the school bus purchase. At the end of September, a total of sixty-three percent of the twenty twenty-five operations appropriation was expended. Western Boone School Corporation has investments in the form of various interest-bearing accounts, deposits treasuries with financial institutions, and has earned interest as follow year-to-date. Home National Bank, four hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-two cents in interest. Raymond James, four thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents in income, seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents change in value. And North Salem State Bank C D interest in the amount of forty-five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents interest. Phil, I asked a great question last month about the Raymond James. The last of the treasuries we had with them matured in June. So we would not see those, that interest will have did stop going up in June or July. And so that's why those those year date numbers will not increase any further. And that money is back in our Home National Bank earning, I think, the four point three percent that we're earning currently. I elected to leave it there instead of the C D rates are about two percent right now. We're just doing better keeping it in the bank. So thanks, Phil, for asking the question. That's the comparison report.
Thank you. And I think we did have a topic in the area of other.
Yeah, and personnel, Western Boone Transportation recommend the hiring of Laura Kirkman, pending completed satisfactory criminal background history report. Laura Kirkman, non-C D L driver, effective October twenty-eighth.
So we have a recommendation for that personnel item. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. And announcements?
Just one. Next week, we're on fall break. Somebody had mentioned, everybody seems kind of happy. And I said, because they have four more days of work and then they have fall break. So it's time for a break. I think principals and leadership team would say that. And so and then I'd be remiss in personnel, you approved my retirement. So appreciate the opportunity. I got about eight more board meetings, I think, so it's far from being done. But, you know, I just think it's important to let everybody know that the board's been working with the university search team and got an I's and crossed some T's. And we'll have the job ready to be posted by, what, October twenty-seventh? So there's a plan in place as far as how you're gonna move forward. And I think that's important for everybody to know. But I appreciate the opportunity to serve. And, you know, we got we got a while to go here, so it's not it's not goodbye. So.
There'll be plenty more twists and turns, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. So.
Well, and and for those folks out there, we started, I mean, this is a proactive decision. That's that the school corporation is, we've been looking at this. We had our first meeting in May with university search team. So it's something that we understand the gravity of it and the importance of the position for the corporation. And it's, I joked and asked Rob, I said, so many questions are you getting about why are you doing that? And it's it's really not anything adversarial. There's nothing where anyone's wanting there to necessarily be changed. But years of service and contribution, and there's a, it's really nice to see people be able to go out kind of on their own terms and their own condition and to do things, kind of go out on top, so to speak. And so I know our school corporation is in a really great position for a lot, a lot of reasons. And that's a that's a collective effort from a lot of people in this room and outside of this room. And it really, things kind of start at the top. So we're we're very appreciative of the importance of the decision for the next superintendent. And again, working with the university search team, and they assure us that we're being extremely proactive in our timeline. If we're well ahead of schedule with it all, but we just don't want to put anything to chance just knowing the importance of all of it for how much it affects our community and individuals as well. So, yeah, thank you for all the work you continue to put in and all the all the work for the it's a, again, it's a collective effort from a lot of people in the corporation. But thank you.
Yep. It was an honor to take the position ten years ago. And as we talked about a little bit prior to the meeting, during the work session, I had stated then, I'll give you ten years and then it'll be time for, I'll be fifty-five and I could retire. And honestly, it'd be time for a change. It's always good for new blood to take over and and continue to point this district toward needs to go. So look forward to seeing how it all shakes out. So.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for the good of the cause this evening? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Melissa. All those in favor? Thank you all. Hope you had a safe drive home and a good fall break.